Good evening, everyone on the call and everyone checking in later. This is the October 22 Board of Library Trustees Virtual Meeting. We are COVID safe, but able to do whatever needs. I'm John Hall, the Chair of the Board. And we introduced everybody last time except some of our guests. So unless somebody is dying to do self introductions, why don't we concentrate on introducing, I think Kirsty, you were not on the last call, right?
That's correct, John.
Could you tell us who you are and what you are?
Certainly. I work in the Literacy and Outreach Departments at the library. So I'm the Literacy Outreach Librarian. And I've been there since 2018, July of 2018. So I know Marguerite directly because she is tutored in our program. And I think I sat in on one board meeting so far. So everybody here looks familiar to me. And thanks for having me.
Well, thanks for being here. I know you by reputation of your department, which is stellar. And it's great to put a face with that long list of accomplishments.
Great.
First on the order of business is the consent agenda. Does anyone have a a motion for, and then we can discuss it if need be?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a minor typo correction here and there that I will send in to Casey.
And the second? Who's seconding?
I'll second with whatever Sarah says.
I had a few minor corrections that I also sent into to Casey, but too late for them to be circulated. That one is a typo. Two of them added detail on what I was reading last time. And one is trying to standardize how we refer to the committee that's supporting the process of finding Charlotte's successor. I went and checked the the language that's being used by the consultant. And he prefers to use the term screening committee. Hiring committee sounds like it's more powerful, I think, than than the general manager would prefer. Screening committee gets to the actual work they'll be doing, which is people submitting resumes and winnowing them down to a manageable group, at which point a larger group will become involved. So I passed those on earlier by email to Casey. And she's already said she'll take care of it. So unless anyone wants to know more about the extra details I put in about the last novel I read on CD and my sister's new book of poetry, which I never get tired of bragging about. Anybody have anything else they want to change or add to the minutes? See, yes, Donna?
I don't really have anything to add to the minutes, although she, the secretary admitted the book I was reading. What I want to say, I'm in a lot of trouble hearing people because it keeps breaking up on me. I don't know what reason for that would be.
Well, he's not breaking up for, is he breaking up for anybody else?
No.
I'm okay.
It might be your connection. You might need to move to a different spot closer to your router. And I think we need to say hi to Leah.
Hi Leah.
What?
Leah O'Leary is
There we go.
active her sickbed. And Leah, you've been participating in a rather important set of tests, is that right?
Yeah, and they're still ongoing.
Maybe the people who are tuning in would like to hear whatever you're comfortable saying about the project you're involved in. Nothing, you don't have to say anything, but.
Well, I don't, I don't think of it as a project. But anyways, I had a kidney infection that got really out of control. I became septic, which is pretty serious. I was in the hospital for a week and rehab for a week. And been working with, you know, therapists, physical therapists here. But I drove my car for the first time since, you know, early September in order to go vote at town hall. So I'm on the mend, although I still have more procedures to go through.
Well, you look good and you sound good, and we're glad to have you back.
Well, if you talked, if I was talking to you a couple of weeks ago, you wouldn't say that.
I guess my timing is good. Having heard no additional changes to the minutes, I will go through and do the vote. I'll do it in order of people shown on my screen. So Ms. Montgomery, you'd be first. Vote on the consent agenda.
Yes.
And Ms. Peg?
Yes.
And Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
And Mr. Mikulik?
Yes.
And Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we have a unanimous support for the consent agenda. Next on the agenda is we're into the things where I count on Ms. Canelli to guide us through the items. We're past welcome and introductions. We're into the no physical presence of the warrant.
Because, because you can't sign.
We're following protocol.
What's that?
We're following the protocols.
Yes, yes. And next onto correspondence. And I did include, I didn't, I didn't have it on the agenda, but I did include it in the packet when I was putting together the packet. I wanted you to see Andy Howard's letter. He donates every single year. This year, he asked that it be spent on, I think, large print books and on Kindle books because he would like to also be spent on digital resources this year. Last year it was children's. And in fact, Kate Tig just purchased something for the children's department recently with that donation from last year. So it's been wonderful having Andy, you know, think of us every single year.
Indeed. Anything more on correspondence?
No, everything's been pretty quiet.
So old business, future reopening services.
Well, we did have, you received an email from me. We received approval from SEVOL this week to go to 30 minutes in the library instead of 20. 30 is a little difficult if you're coming in and you're going upstairs and you're setting everything down and trying to get, trying to get settled, for instance, at a public computer. So we did go, we did go to 30 minutes. And I think patrons are allowed to be on. They lock, it shuts them off after 25. And we need to keep to that 30 minutes. We've had many requests to be able to have another session, but we aren't able to honor that. We now are allowing anybody to come into the reading room. I don't think anybody has yet because we need to get the word out that our newspapers and magazines are back out. When somebody finishes reading one, however, they have to bring it up to the reference desk so it can be quarantined for 24 hours, which is, you know, unfortunate. That means if somebody does come in and read The Boston Globe, it's gone for the rest of the day. But we're hoping that more and more of our, of the people who used to come in and stay actually for hours, or maybe come in and just read one periodical or one paper, will start coming in, will start feeling comfortable coming into the reading room to do that. In the mornings from 9:30 to 12:30, or on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we add the additional hour, 8:30 to 9:30. And we also loosened some of the restrictions in the staff room. Now that it's getting cold, we will be able to have people, as long as they're sitting six feet apart from each other, whereas before we didn't allow more than one staff member to be having lunch or break, and one staff member to be actually at the kitchen sink area. And so we've now figured it out that there can probably be about four people in there. Other than that, people will be eating at their desks, or they'll be leaving the library. And so that's what we've done to reopen. Yesterday, we had a meeting, a virtual meeting with 53 other people in Minuteman. And there were presentations. I happened to be one of the presenters. We talked about how we reopened and any problems we encountered and all the details. We had six minutes, which of course was, we were racing through pretty much all of us trying to, you know, tell others who have not opened. I think about maybe half of the libraries have not opened. They have curbside, but they have not opened to patrons. And so those, those directors wanted to know how to impart information to their staff about the library's two have been successful reopening. And it was very interesting because several of the directors, several of the directors felt sorry. Sorry about that. What time is it? Jerry? So several of the directors spoke to the fact, Natick and I think Recline spoke to the fact that they do expect their town has talked to them about expecting to be closing down again. So we just really don't know. Now, that might be the time to talk about the news today that officially came out at four o'clock, even though they spilled the beans last night at the school committee meeting, that Norwood is back, is in the red. Which, if we are in the red for three weeks in a row, I think that there will be some kind of consequence for that. And we may have to curtail some services. I really don't know what that means. They may be shutting down inside of restaurants. I have no idea what that is actually going to mean for Norwood. But we haven't received nothing so far from SEVOL. And usually what she'll do is she'll address it at the manager's meeting the following week, unless there was something immediate to impart to us. We also have opened up the study rooms to one, one user per day for each study room. These are rooms that traditionally have always been used by literacy, but literacy is not able to do anything in person. So we've opened up those rooms to people, if it's a family group, father and son, or, you know, mother and child who want to do some kind of online learning in the room. And other than that, it's just one person. And it's only one person per day, so the room can be cleaned and ready for the next day for somebody else to go in there. So we really are not thinking anything else at this point, given the fact that we, we knew that, that cases were rising. So we had a department head meeting today at two o'clock with all the department heads so that I could tell them, you know, to anticipate some, you know, that there might be some changes coming. We also talked about some of the ways that we're operating. Want to make sure that everybody understands how we're supposed to be operating. And we also talked a little bit about the closure next week on Tuesday and Wednesday for the LED lighting. So that's, that's old business, future reopening services.
Anyone have any questions for Charlotte on any of that? Not seeing any on to noise in the library and team behavior.
Where, there is none. Interestingly, a couple of the directors said that children are not allowed in the children's room. In, oh, the children's room is totally shut down. And they have brought out a browsing bookcase at the very front of the room that people can go and choose a book from. So that, that was interesting, I thought, because our children's room has been open. It hasn't been a problem. We allow only two people to come in. If there's an older sibling, that older sibling comes in, anybody over the age of 10 can come in and interact with us on their own. They're, they're, you know, they're a single patron. That's what we consider them. But Kate's kids pop-up is greatly appreciated. She went out yesterday. And I understand Lydia and, is that right, Casey? Lydia and Joanne Rabit are helping with it next week, or they're doing it? Kirsty, you were there too. I didn't quite get that.
Yeah, they're going to join in.
They're just joining in to help out. Yeah. So that's pretty exciting. They're, they're, you know, they're bringing other staff members now to go on the road with their kids pop-up library. So until the weather gets worse, and I think it will have to get worse because they brave the heat in the summer. They'll be able to brave some of the cold in the winter. Then, then we would have to shut down for the, shut that project down, unless there was a way to do it safely inside, which I don't believe that's going to happen this winter. So there is no noise in the library from, from any teens or children. There's not much noise in the library in general. It's so quiet in the afternoon when we're closed and doing curbside that it's a little ghostly. It's, it's kind of strange. But anyway, so that's, that's that.
Okay. Reports.
Okay, so the library budget, you have, you have that in front of you. We're, we're on track, right where we should be. If you look at, you know, all of the the percentage spent. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. One thing I did want to say is in the budget update, when we talked about the budget last meeting, I did mention that utilities had been cut. I also mentioned that utilities were underspent by $10,000 last year. And the town, the reason they cut our utility budget was because they anticipated our lighting, our electric costs to go down significantly as we, as they finished the LED lighting project, which I think will happen. And the fact that we were, while we were down last year, we don't really know why, because we did have lights on and computers were on, but we didn't have people using them the way that they, they normally do from March on. So that may have contributed to that. I'm not, we don't know for sure. You know, it's always sort of a moving target. We either go over budget or under budget. And the telephone was cut because, for some reason, they didn't think that we would have any telephone costs. I'm really not sure why they thought that. We will have to make sure that's in the budget this year because we are still paying Verizon and AT&amp;T for our phone lines. And, and so we do still have telephone costs. But I think they thought that was the cost of the, we had that in equipment was the cost of national telecom service. And they just cut us. So we need to make sure that that's just put back in there. It wasn't a significant amount. It's not a significant amount of money we'll be able to absorb this year, but we need to make sure that there's a line item for it. So other than that, the budget is, we're, you know, we're, we're on track with our spending for materials purchases. And we probably won't spend as much money in certain areas this year with the fact that we're not open as much and we don't have the number of patrons coming through. I'm not quite sure. It's just going to have to play out. We can analyze it when it's, when it's done. And also in, in the financial report, you have the revolving report in front of you. And I had talked about that a little bit last month. And in the budget update, we are not getting the funds in from either fines or from passports that we got last year. But we also are spending less money on programming costs, on refreshments, on lots of different things. So I think we'll be okay throughout this year, but it's going to be something we'll have to think about long term because we won't have those funds to spend on programming and supplies and whatnot. This year, I think everything's just going to be fine. We'll try not to spend too much of it on programming and other things. We can spend a little from state aid. Programming costs are going up. They're not going up higher than last year, but people are. Kate and Liz and, and April are spending money. They're finding more and more and more programs. And let's face it, these programs, these people who present always were paid to do that. They need to make a living. That's what they were doing. So I don't think we begrudge paying them for the virtual programs. It's just not in person. But people are attending them. And we think we're doing a really good job with that, so.
Well, I think that all of us on the board recognize that programming activity by the library is being one of its crown jewels. Brings in a lot of people who, that may be the only point of contact they have. And without doubt, without an exception, they come away from these programs with a really good feeling about what they experienced and the people who made that possible. Marguerite, I thought I had seen you signaling you had something to say on the budget.
Yes, I had a question about funds. There's a, there's a, on the right, there's a column that really didn't make it into the other columns, the columns. It's like a freestanding column. So I understand.
Is it on the budget, on the budget document?
Yeah, on page 12.
Yep.
So I understand the grants and I understand the literacy as the LVM. And the trust in books, is that just the 230 and the 230 added up to the 460? Do you see what I'm saying there?
Nope, I don't. You're talking about the budget, the budget 21, FY21, this long. Oops, this one, right?
Well, like, no, it came out on page 12 of 33 on mine.
Okay. Yeah, and I apologize that.
It's not the long one, it's a short one. No, it's the one that starts out with, you know, it looks like it's, it's the, it's the little one. It's the endowment one.
Did you say page 12 or 13?
12.
Page 12 of 33.
Yeah. And, and I apologize, I put in my, I, I produced two documents and I make sure that they, they're supposed to add up, so it's a check and balance for me. And I put in my special funds instead of the one that you normally look at, which looks like this, which has the same, whoops, has the same information. It's just in a different format. So let's see.
The one I don't understand is there's one freestanding, it says trust in Galant, 976.
Well, that's my, that's, that's what I, why I don't include this in the packet and why I made the mistake of including it this time. It's a way for me to do a check and balance on which columns. It's, it's a separate little calculation off to the side that you're not supposed to, that's just for me.
Oh, so it's not really there?
Well, it's there, but it's adding up things that you, you don't normally add up.
Right, I see. Yeah, okay. I get it.
And it's my way of knowing everything is in the, is in the spreadsheet.
Now, questions for Paula?
Pardon?
Marguerite, do you or any of the other board members have any other comments or questions about the budget?
Oh, it just looks a little different, so I was just, you know, trying to figure it out. Okay, no, I don't have any questions. It looks good.
Marguerite, you can come in and meet with me and I'll, I'll show you how I do that.
Actually, I did want to come in to meet with you so you could just go over the endowments with me and the gifts before you go. So I'll have it in my head.
And explain all of them, yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay. I'm scrolling back up to where the agenda is.
Okay.
So it looks like we're up to personnel report and director search. Before you, you have a number of things, Charlotte. Let me just mention that since our last meeting, we've had a one-person change on the screening committee. It turns out that while we all agreed that Patty Fanning would be a great choice, I neglected to find out if she agreed. And it turned out that when she got wind of this, she's not actually available. So she's been replaced after consultation with a number of people with longtime library superfan Joe Greeley, who knows the library and, and knows Norwood Town Government and likes both and has helped both. And well, I'm sure make a great contribution to that committee. I believe in about a week's time or so, they will be closing on their initial call for resumes. And I think, Charlotte, you know those details as well. So if I'm saying it wrong, please correct me.
I believe it closed on, I thought it closed on Tuesday.
Ah, so it's already closed.
Yep.
Okay. We've got three members of the steering committee here. And I'm not going to ask what you're seeing, but just have you had any indication from Bernie Lynch on the, the size of the response we got?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Large, medium, or small? Is it large, medium, or small?
I guess it depends on your parameters. To me, I thought it was medium.
Medium, okay. Cheryl, let me.
As I understand it, Bernie checked in with me. As I understand it though, there's, there's a good pool to work with.
That's, that's a subjective judgment that's a lot more useful than my search for unquantified numbers. Cheryl, let me turn it back to you for other matters on the personnel report and anything else you may want to mention on this survey.
Well, I, for one, am thrilled that the search is on, on target. It seems to me that, that Bernie did a good job in figuring out how, you know, it would work through the end of the year and into January. So I think that's great, even though I'm not privy to the, you know, I'm not part of the search. The, what are we calling that again?
Screening committee.
Screening committee. Well, I don't have any, anything else to report other than what I reported last month, which is that we have three, well, two, three people retiring and one person, Nancy Ling, who is leaving and keeping her, her options open for municipal, possibly going to work for another municipality in years ahead. So that's why she's not officially retiring. She's keeping that, that option open. And we just are waiting for the, you know, the very first search that we could do, which is for the children's department. We have another, another week before that posting would be able to come out. So we are going to, Molly and I are working on that. We've got a plan. We won't be doing all of, well, the director is ongoing, but the other three won't be, we'll sort of do them one, kind of one at a time to make it easier on, on everybody. So that's, that's all that we have for personnel.
For those watching at home who are not totally immersed in the terminology, Molly is the Town Human Resources Director. Molly Keane. Anybody have any questions for Charlotte on personnel matters? Seeing none. We're up to friends of the library and I believe Ms. Cummings, that's, you're our contact.
Well, as Charlotte said, they're trying to, the friends are trying to get Ted Reinstein to come back. He did that wonderful little show on the New England General Stores. I think you liked that, John.
I loved it.
So I, yeah, if. So I, yeah, if all things go the way they're supposed to go, he'll be coming back on December 8th. And I don't know what he's going to be speaking about now, but for those that don't know, he's a journalist and he's been on Chronicle many times. And he's on the editorial board of WCBB. And he's an author, he's written several books about New England. And so he'll, he'll be coming and the Friends will be presenting that. They also were trying to have a fundraiser, I think we spoke about it last month at Little Bird, but that fell through. It didn't seem that Little Bird, because of the restrictions of the governor, felt that they would be able to have a, a group in their facility. So, but if all things go well and now that Charlotte mentioned that we're in the red, I don't know if this will come about, but the Chateau did say that they would, that they would, once again, host a promotion for the library through the Friends, and that's one of those things where you can go in and if you mention the library, either for takeout or dining in, a portion of what you order will go towards the library. And it's a win-win situation. It elevates the library and it also promotes the Friends. And, and the Chateau gets business too, so it's win, win, win all around. And when they get a date and everything, I'm sure that Carla will be just all over that with social media. And so it's going to be a good thing.
And there, there. Sorry.
Yeah, and that's, and that's about all I have, but, and you had already mentioned. Yeah. The Friends will be sending out their renewal in the light bill in December. But also, if people want to sign up, they can also sign up at that time. So that's all. I also haven't said that they were thinking of some other, other programs, which some of them sound fun. There's this place in town, I guess it's called Ari Dance, does anybody know that? Dance Place in Town. It's for children and adults and some kind of a Zoom, virtual Zoom thing program. So that sounds like fun, too. We write out front. So anyways, that's it.
Well, I was impressed that they got, I think it was a $260 check or $270 check from the, from the Chateau that they had in the spring. So that's a pretty easy way for them to, you know, to make some, to make some money, seeing as we aren't doing any book sales. I have to point out right now that a lot of libraries have been doing book sales, they've been doing them, some of them are inside. Kirsty actually sent me something. I don't know if this was the one Kirsty, where they did it by appointment? No? And they're also setting up tables outside in the parking lots. I think Belmont did several in one month because they were so successful, successful, thousands of dollars. They just put the books out on tables outside and collected the money and of course, we don't, we're not exchanging any money in the library because we feel that it's safer for us to do that. So, but I'm sure if people had gloves on their hands, it would be, you know, okay to do. So anyway, it is something for the Friends to think about, possibly maybe in the better weather, weather in the, in the spring, unless they can spontaneously just sort of decide to do something. It couldn't be done in the library at this point because our simony room is full of everything that you can think of, from chairs to tables and books and all kinds of things, so it would have to be outside.
Kirsty, could you send that along to me?
What was your, you sent me something, Kirsty?
It was an all-regions email, I can dig that up and forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, that's the Friends.
Thank you.
I'm usually good for one. Howlingly awful idea per meeting, so I think this is the time when I'm going to throw that out. Has any library that we know of tried doing an online book sale? Where you put the books on the screen, where you can go through them, you can pay for them by credit card, and you pick them up the way you pick up books you're checking out?
Well, it'll be something to think about.
We, I, I went to Lydia about something like that, and I won't, you know, I mean, I think building the infrastructure is a pretty intensive project to do if you're gonna abandon it later. If it was being set up to, to go forward, maybe that would be different, but she kind of, you know, it, it would be labor-intensive.
And I think the revenue for personnel expended in setting it up would be a hard case to make. Okay. Backing away quickly from that idea.
Good idea, though.
Let's see. We've heard some mention of programming already, which is the next item on the agenda. Charlotte, or any of you, anything else to add on that?
No, Liz did include, you know, all of the, all of the Facebook posts that Carla creates to let you know what we've been up to. And I know Liz is, has a meeting tonight, a program tonight, I'm not sure which one that is. But they are, you know, they're really ramping up our programming so that it's almost what we used to do, except for it's all virtual. So the numbers aren't the same. I think a lot of people, you know, there are people who just aren't, it's, it's not working for them, the virtual programs. But I think we're, you know, we're, we're really holding our own and, you know, feel, kind of just figuring out what it is that people are looking for. Liz and Irene have been holding safe Stitch Doctor appointments out in the picnic table in the back of the library, which has been really great. So we're able to do things that I, I don't think we thought we were going to be able to do. We're not going to be able to teach knitting to a class of six. That's going to be really difficult, but certainly the one-on-one knitting can, can still, I don't know what will happen once the weather gets really, really poor. It might be that all they will need is a small corner of the simony room, as long as they're wearing masks. So we'll, we'll get to that as we, you know, as the year progresses. I think the weather changes are going to be difficult for us as we move forward, because we came out of COVID into the better weather. And now we're going back in, in, you know, in the, in the weather as it's getting colder. So although today is, today is beautiful.
Yeah.
Is any of that the sort of thing that you could pre-plan how your protocols ought to change, or are you already on that?
I'm sorry, I don't understand, what was that?
Sure. Is it, can you use some of the time before the cold weather arrives to pre-plan how you would change your protocols when it has changed? Or how much it would have to change before you feel that that was necessary?
Well, I think what we did just do, John, is go backwards to what we had. So we already, you know, I don't think we need to, what we would do is just take some of the, some of the services away slowly if things were to get worse. If they shut the library down, if they closed us, but allowed us to have curbside, we, we've already talked about how, we've already discussed a lot of these, we'd go back. Are you talking specifically about programming?
No, I was, you've anticipated what I meant to say if I'd been clear, which was that your plans that you already developed are in some ways modular. And you can pull a piece out and stick a piece in to suit the circumstances. There is an additional development on the plan that's required to be ready.
Yeah, yeah. It will depend on so many different things, like how many staff are allowed in the library and various other things if we're pulling back. But the work, you know, we're, we've already talked about things that could happen, some hypotheticals. But, you know, it, it's kind of hard to go there when we're not there. So as we were ready, within the first week of, the first week of COVID, we will be ready for any new steps. Is where, you know, it's because we have just such a great team working together. Everybody contributes, everybody, you know, everybody's, everybody's thoughts are valued, everybody's opinions. And so I'm not too worried about it as long as I'm there. And then, of course, a new director is, you know, most likely going to have come from another library that's dealt with the same stuff. So it's not like, you know, so I think, I think we just, unfortunately, we have to take it one day at a time or one week at a time.
Okay. Anybody have anything else they want to say or add on that topic? Not seeing any, we're on to maintenance and repair.
Well, I'm just really, I have to say, very impressed with Townwide Facilities. Chris Folen is wonderful, Paul Ricardi, the others on the group, they're coming in and taking care of that lighting project for us. They got a grant to do that, so I believe our capital money, which was earmarked for that, goes somewhere else. And I do have some, some things I would like to get done this year because we have a budget for it, which is the back hallway linoleum should really be replaced. It's really getting bad to the point where it's sort of crumbling, it will be crumbling pretty soon under our feet. So I'm going to talk to, as soon as the lighting project is over, I'm going to talk to Paul Ricardi and Chris Folen and hopefully we can work on that, getting that done for the library. We didn't have a lot of projects lined up, so we're hoping, we had a painting, a Capitol, Outlay Painting money for this year, and we'll see when that happens as well. But the building is just in phenomenal shape, and we've also have those back windows. But Townwide Facilities really needs to be, they need to be the lead on it from now on, rather than the, rather than me and with, and Jim, that was the idea of Townwide Facilities. But they've been very, you know, they, they've been great, so I'll be meeting with them after the lighting project is over.
Good. New business. Meeting dates for the fall. We, we had a schedule that was our normal schedule, but our need to move this meeting is kind of compressed that schedule a bit. And we may be hitting a number of major tent holds throughout the, the fall. I think, Charlotte, you had done some thinking about what might be a new set of dates that we might discuss?
Well, I, I actually had asked if we could push them up. I don't know at this point what's going to happen with my travel plans. Because we had planned, as you know, I haven't been able to get to Florida to take care of my brother's things, and so we did make reservations, and the only way that I can work it is to be here the first, the first week of the month in order to do the trustee packet and get everything prepared in order to get that out to you so that when I came home. Now, virtually, I could virtually attend the meeting, I just wouldn't be here. I think at this point, we are not going to be open for the, you know, for meetings in the library. I think we're going to be virtual. At the time when I came up with the proposal to move, move the dates about two months ago, the thought was that perhaps we would be back in the library meeting, and I just don't think that's realistic. My, there, there is a lot of justification for moving the meeting dates up to the 17th of November and the 15th of December. They're more in, a little bit more in the middle of the month rather than the first, the December meeting would be the 8th, which is always hard to prepare for because the first of the, of the month is a Tuesday and we've got to scramble to get all of our stuff together. So if there was no objection to, to doing that and moving those dates to the 17th and the 15th, it would work well for me. But I can also attend virtually if we don't. There's, you know, if there's a, if there's a major objection to doing that, then I don't have a problem with keeping it the same. Donna?
I don't have any objections. But I am curious about when we would get the packet. I was really surprised that we got the packet so late when this meeting moved. I, I expected it, you know, by the second week of October, not with a meeting.
Well, what happened with that is I had five hours of workshops with the staff that first week. We'd already moved the meeting. So at that point, I knew that I wasn't going to have to, you know, stay up until 12 o'clock at, at home getting the packet ready because I had time, because I, you know, sending the packet to you four or five days in advance has been what I've been doing. So, and I had the state aid report, it was absolute, because I had my vacation week planned to help my children move to Portland. So, you know, that's, that's all I can say, is I do the best I, I possibly can to, you know, get everything, all my decks in a row in the library, get everything filed on time. Also, working really hard for my exit. And I felt that five hours of training for some of my key leaders in the library on the finances was really important. So they understood, totally understood the finances of the library. You know, in case there's any questions, we have a leadership team now that fully understands. Casey was part of that, those workshops on that Tuesday and Thursday afternoon, you know, and I had to prepare for those. And it just happened to fall that first week of, of October.
But I didn't get the packet until two days ago.
Uh, I don't know, I was, I was working on it on Sunday. I think I sent it out Monday. When I got back in the library, I had some documents I had to go back in the library for. So you got it, you should have gotten it Monday.
So whichever day I got it, it was 8:30, which means that day is over for me, 8:30 at night. So that gave me two, yeah, so it probably came Monday night at 8:30. But I just, even that, you know, I was just surprised I didn't get it like four or five days before the meeting just because you did have the additional period of time, and I understand.
I did have additional time, but I had a, I had seven days of vaca, I had 11 days of vaca, I had 11 days off. In that time.
There's one other thing, though, that since we have Lydia as assistant director, and since Lydia is being a member of this group, I'm surprised you didn't have Lydia do it.
Well.
Didn't occur? Okay. All right. Well, so my point is that I'm hoping we will get it a little bit sooner if we move the meeting dates.
I do have to say that when I started as director here, the packets were mailed, Sarah will attest to that. The packets were mailed on a Friday, everyone received them on Monday for the Tuesday meeting. And I sped it up on purpose to be able to get the packets out to you digitally more days in advance than was the norm for a number of years. There are, there are boards that get their documents that day. It's kind of hard to be relevant to the timing. This month was different because I did have the, I did have the whole week off, this, that week of, whatever that week was. And did not have the time to get the packets together. And I filed state aid, I got state aid in, that's a huge project. And I fit that five hours of training for the staff workshops. So I'm sorry you feel you should be.
I was just curious and asking, you know. So, thank you.
I think we, I think people have expressed their, their points of view here. I checked while the session was going on, and I did get it fine on Monday. And I, I tend to, I, for some people who are in responsible positions like ours, I think Monday is Monday all day. And so if that doesn't work with your schedule, that's a legitimate concern for you, but not necessarily for the rest of the board members who have different routines. Personally, I, I also feel that at this time, things are. At this time, things are changing and developing so rapidly. That I kind of like the idea of waiting to see whether something comes in. That could usefully be included, that wouldn't be included if it went out with a long lead time. I felt differently back when things were very routine and very standard. Which is most of the time that I've been on the board, they have been. But that sure doesn't describe this year, and less and less so as we get closer to Ms. Cannelli's departure date, so. Unless someone has something else to add on, on this topic. I think we're in a position to. And I wanted to see if explicitly if anybody had any specific problems with the two dates. That, I see. Sarah's shaking her head no, Leah's shaking her head no, George doing the same, I would do the same. And so it looks like we're good for those, and we can go ahead with them. Next thing up is recognition program step.
Yes, I just wanted to bring up. The fact that I, I had a special recognition program that went on during my tenure. Which was to present staff with. A. A certificate Carla Howard has been making up, which they're wonderful, it looks like an official certificate. And it's called the Anne Francis Fund. And I don't believe that will go on the way that it had in the past. We can certainly just recognize, but there was, there was a, there wasn't any. Monetary. Recognition to the staff member, but I did donate money every month into the Francis Fund. Which has been something that a lot of us have been doing over the years anyway. Mary Finney. Gave a big donation to the Francis Fund, Anne Francis was a member of our staff who passed away of cancer years ago. And every Christmas I give a donation, and we receive them from some of the older members who knew Anne Francis, and that's what keeps the Anne Francis Fund going. And I don't expect that another director would do that, but I was hoping that there was some way that the trustees could come up with. Suggestions for the new director or possibly a committee. Because what I do is I take suggestions from the staff and they write to me and they have a suggestion for when. For somebody who should receive the award, and I was kind of hoping that maybe there could be some brainstorming. I don't want to put it into place because it's not my program. But that, that you will take it seriously in order to do that, to do sort of a staff recognition program for excellent service. And often, most of the time, I did take a suggestion, somebody would send me an email and say. That somebody had gone above and beyond that month, or had been going above and beyond that month. And, and I, I talked to John about this, and, you know, he's kind of unclear as to where you would go with it as well. But I think it's really important. I think that recognizing the staff in some way for their, for their excellent service. Would be, would be a really great thing going forward. And a lot of libraries do have. Different kinds of recognition programs, whether it's, you know, gift cards or. Actually, some of them will even give, you know, hours off and various things like that, so. I thought maybe, I just wanted to bring that up before I leave, that that would be great to have the tradition of doing that again. I think it's really appreciated by the staff. They like being called out for their service, so. That, that's just where I'll leave it.
Let, let me just mention, if, if clarity is needed, that when Charlotte and I spoke. I, I liked the intent behind the program. I was. Hearing about it for the first time, and, and I had more questions than answers. So I think. I would love to hear from other board members. On both whether something like this is, is a good idea for the board to pursue, to discuss with the new director. And it looks like George is thinking there's some comment, so George, you first.
Well, it's, it's one of those things that a lot of organizations, especially, you know, I'm glad to hear that you've been doing that for some time. Because it is really important for organizations to, you know, really recognize those people that do go above and beyond, but. Now with the whole COVID situation, seems like a lot of businesses as well are just, have really realized that. To, you know, not just to, you know, obviously some of it is to help continue to spur people to be involved and to, you know, stay interested in their jobs, but. Also really truly to recognize those that, that do really try extra hard. So I, I can see a couple of different scenarios, perhaps. Maybe it's something that. You know, maybe we keep an eye open for that during our search. As far as has someone done this before, you know, and, and do they have a program like that? And maybe it's more of us as a board. You know, putting a bug in the ear and asking for something, you know, to be created. Because obviously not being there every day and being involved in it, that, you know, would be hard for us to make those judgments. However. I think that we could offer some guidance and, you know, maybe even. You know, find out from you, Charlotte, like, you know, what are some of the things that you look for? And what are some of the things that people comment on, you know, because I've heard of, heard of organizations that kind of have set. Awards in place for someone that, you know, helped a patron perhaps, or someone that did something behind the scenes that no one even realized. But, you know, I also find that a lot of those structured. Kind of awards don't really always tell the whole story. And a lot of times it is just when you catch somebody out of the corner of your eye doing something that, you know, is very meaningful. So I, you know, I think that. I, I think we can at least be supportive of that kind of an idea as far as how directly we can. Influence it. Now that, that's what I'd be interesting here if anybody else has any ideas.
Comments from others?
I think it's a great idea, George, that possibly that be, be something that you ask. You know, in, in your interview process, because I think that's, that's something that. That would probably go by the wayside a lot of times and not even be thought about, and that's something that I think will be important, especially for such an amazing staff. Who really, you know, just work so hard. And have, always, even, even in non-COVID times, so. Anyway, I just wanted to put that on the agenda because I talked to John about it, and I want to make sure that everybody's, you know, thinking about it.
Charlotte, can I ask you? You, you give a monetary award to the Francis Award in somebody's name, is that how it is now?
Yeah. Twenty-five dollars a month is, is, I write a check for twenty-five dollars. The Fran, that's what the Francis Fund is for. It was set up for staff development, staff recreation, staff attain, entertainment. It, that's what it was meant for, and that's all it's spent on, and it usually just is spent partially on professional development day, which of course we didn't have this year. And on, on the holiday, holiday party. But it also could be spent, you know, on, on other things. It could be, you know. It could be some other, I'm trying to think of what it's up to now. It's twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars. Twenty-six hundred dollars in it now. So it was set up with about three thousand dollars. It did, it used to make a little bit of interest, it no longer really does, but, and, and the staff had used it for. They went on a cruise and they had a dinner out and various things, and that generally isn't happening anymore. Partly because most of the staff, there are only very, very few people on, on staff that knew Anne, that, that know of her. Her work at the library, and so now it's generally used for the staff, for the staff for the holiday, for their holiday party and, and professional development day. So that's what it's for.
Does the recipient of the award get, like. A paper or a, a, a certificate of any sort that said, yeah?
Yep. They get a certificate from, that Carla makes for them, and some people display them in their office. In fact, I think pretty much everybody does. And they also get a letter that goes into their personnel file.
Nice.
The letter explains why they, why they, what they've done or why they, why they've been recognized.
Other comments? Let me prime the pump a little with a couple of programs I'm familiar with. Which have more cautionary tales than role model value. During one of the president at NFA's tenures. He introduced the employee of the, of the year, outstanding employee. It was an annual award, it went to four people. It was a, a considerable cash award. And at the very beginning, a lot, a number of people were concerned. That it would inspire more resentment than celebration. That proved to be an exaggerated concern, but it easily might not have been. The selection process was highly elaborate. You, you nominated people, you put in applications. Multiple people would put them in for the same individual. There was a, you got to realize that they had a number of quota rules. No one who won an award was ever nominated again. And every year, you could see that the organization had been divided into four parts. And there would always be one and only one award recipient in each of those parts. So. It fended off some obvious areas of resentment, but it also made the whole thing seem a lot more artificial. And it didn't survive to the next president. The other example that I'm familiar with that I'll mention just as a, because it's frivolous, but it's, it's not as irrelevant as it sounds, is. Early in its tenure, Marvel Comics was trying to find techniques to build a sense of family relationship with their readers. And they came up with something they called a no prize. Because if there's no prize, there can be no losers and no winners. And they started just announcing in the letters column that this person who sent in a particularly good letter would get a no prize. This became more valuable than anything tangible because the people they were pitching it to were that excited about it. So they started sending out a no prize. And the no prize consisted of an empty envelope. With a Marvel drawing on the cover. And I was lucky enough to win one once, so I know that it, for people of the target group. This was really cool. It would be every bit as inspirational as getting. A donation in your name to a respected fund, participation in a group activity funded by that fund. And a certificate that was yours and yours alone. So I think the design that's gone into Charlotte's program has a lot of advantages. That you only become aware of as you start thinking about alternatives. Though I'd rather. I'd rather not have the board design the program. I'd rather have the board dump this on the new director. Either in interviews or instructions at the outset. But I'd like to find a way to have a conversation. And I think that in some ways, the best way for that to start. Would be for you, Charlotte, to have a conversation with the new director and say, you say, here's a one-page description of this program I've been running. It seems to be quite popular. It doesn't, it's got some advantages and, and everything. And. If you think it might be interesting, you know, you might want to pursue it. I know that the board is aware of the program and would be more than happy to talk about it with you. If you'd like to have broader participation in the decision. Does that sound reasonable?
There is on the town, on the town website. I've never been privy to anything, but under the personnel policies, there is a. Employee recognition award policy. And a performance award policy that maybe some board members should just take a look at. I don't really. So, you know, anyway, so I know everyone's anxious, probably anxious to watch the debates tonight, so. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, we still got twenty minutes, and I think we'll make it.
Okay.
So to be continued. Library budget FY twenty-two.
There's been no movement. I have not been told anything. We haven't received our letter about the budget. I did talk to Kathy Carney. And, and she thinks that we will probably be submitting something about, about the end of December. So I am going to, I'm going to put a skeleton of a budget together to leave with, we'll leave with you, and, and what's wonderful now is. There, there are five other members of the staff who are very aware of how I put the budget together. And what is required for, for state aid and everything else, so I think. And, and I, you know, and if, if the new director is from Massachusetts, they'll certainly understand. What's required in Massachusetts, so everything is in place for that. So we'll sit down and talk, the budget committee and I, will have a meeting sometime before, but I need to. I'll put a skeleton together, but I'll need an official letter from the town with budget, with the budget process in front of us. In order to go forward, but we did not, do not believe we submitted it until January last year, the end of January. And it was kind of a very quick, get it in, you know, we had ten days or something, but it, that can be done, you know, it's not. Superhuman effort to put the budget together, especially when it's supposed to be a level-funded budget, so. And, but, but you need to be aware that there is no contract in place. So we're up, up against having to sign a contract by town meeting time. In May, in order to have a budget in place with a, with a, a cost of living or not. So we need to, you know, you're gonna have to, you know, just, everyone's just gonna have to be aware of that. But I, I'll sit down with everybody beforehand, so.
We'll follow your lead. Strategic plan. You want to say something about it, or?
Well, I did, I did, John and I talked at length about the strategic plan, which is due next October. We did put together a, a timeline of how that can be done. Especially if, if there is a consultant hired without, last time we spent, oh man, what was it about? I think six, at least six months, meeting and talking and putting an RFP out and. Getting our, our consultant on board. We actually didn't, the meetings didn't start until with the public or with the staff until at least March. So it's a really doable plan to start thinking about now, especially if a consultant gets hired without. An RFP, and John, I did check with Kathy Carney, by the way, and anything under ten thousand dollars does not need to go out to bid.
Okay.
And ours was way below that last time. So it is something that you could decide on a consultant that you wanted to work with and move forward from there, and we had some ideas on that, so maybe we'll just leave it there. For tonight and talk about that more in depth. At the next meeting. My suggestion personally was to possibly reach out to Bernie Lynch. Because he's done such a great job already encapsulating what NORIT is all about. Which is a lot of the work of a consultant, trying to figure out what the town is all about. That's all a big part of the long-range plan. Another, another thing that bothers me is that we're in the middle of COVID. And a long-range plan at this point in time. Is going to be somewhat hypothetical. to be able to um, put in place. You know, you can have all your your plans in place, but, you know, like we did this year with COVID. We've been able to pretty much keep up with all of our goals and objectives. There are some things we haven't been able to do. Uh, but um, so that's something also to think about. So I just want to put that on your radar, that 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 is going to be due in October, and the new director should be the person doing that um, with a team of staff and and board and public, um, like we did, we normally do. So that's also something that should be possibly really seriously thought about in the next couple of months, so that you have a plan in place before January. The January meeting, I think, is the twelfth. And I will be gone that Friday, the fifteenth.
A couple of other points that I endorse everything Charlotte said. The timeline that we developed was necessarily compressed, but it also was designed not to get ahead of the new director. So most of what was to be done between now and the end of the calendar year was to confirm who on the board is going to be the group running this. And there we have, Sarah and I, I think, are the two who were involved in the last plan. And Leah and Donna are the ones who were on the committee that has traditionally taken ownership of the plan. So we might be thinking along the lines of some combination of those four people. And the other is what Charlotte has anticipated. If we could uh, get in a position where we have a pretty good idea or even a definite commitment passing into the next calendar year on who the consultant is going to be, that would be uh, a very valuable step. Something Charlotte didn't mention is that a lot of the people who were available for consideration as consultants last time have by now left the field. They've retired. They're not doing that kind of work anymore, and that includes the particular consultant who worked with us. And so not only does Bernie have uh, some absolute advantages as a possible consultant, but he has a lot of relative advantages in that I, I don't know who would be available to even be asked the question if we don't pursue him and are not successful. So I think I'm capturing the spirit of what Charlotte had to say, which was, uh, why don't we plan to put on the agenda some actual decisions at the next November meeting, circling around uh, what we'll do about pursuing a consultant and who will be the board team that will be uh, taking point on all of this. And George, I think I saw you signaling to speak, so please do.
No, no, I'm just to tell you, you're doing a great job, and I agree with you.
Great. Feel free to break in with that statement anytime. Sarah, you you are an experienced person in all of this. Uh, any thoughts about uh, how we adapt it to our current circumstances and other things going on?
I'm not sure where you're heading with that question.
It was meant to be an opening for you to say whatever you felt like saying, and if what you felt like saying was nothing now, but check with me later, that's perfectly fine.
Nothing now, check with me at a future meeting.
I believe Sarah might have been the board chair when we started the long-range plan last time, and Cashman was the actual uh, board chair when it was completed. Uh, John, you and Pat Hines were the committee that worked on it. So um, you you would have the most knowledge, besides me, about how we worked it last time.
And for those who didn't know, Cashman, he was very much a detailed person, as I tend to be. So uh, you had both the advantages and disadvantages of that. Okay, well, sounds like we have a plan for for next month and and the glimmers of a plan going forward from there on. I'm sure that I will be talking more with Charlotte so that we make the meetings that we have productive. Search warrants.
There were none.
Excellent. Miscellaneous advisories?
Nothing other than the fact that, you know, Norwood has moved up to red. Um, other than that, there are no advisories for the library.
Staff and public remarks, otherwise known as the reading lately. Um, Casey, let me start with you. There's an on button there somewhere for your mic.
Sorry, I can never find the unmute. I actually don't have any reading suggestions this month. I've been completely inundated with election coverage and a home renovation project. So not a single ounce of bandwidth can go to anything else.
Got it. Kirsty, how about you?
Um, I listened to Stephen King's Elevation, which was a twenty eighteen release. Um, I listened to that on um, Libby, and it was read by the author, and it did not disappoint. It's a novella, so it's very short. So if you're short on time, but you're looking for a little hit of the Stephen King magic, um, I would recommend Elevation. Uh, parts of it were a little clunky. The 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 basic uh, plotline is the character is this unassuming, ordinary man who um, develops this condition whereby he uh, keeps losing weight. Um, now, lest you think it's like thinner, it's totally not. Um, but uh, he he even loses weight regardless, like when he gets on the scale, he'll weigh the same uh, if he has clothes on or not. So there's a little bit of the mystical Stephen King magic. Um, and it's woven together with the story of um, a lesbian um, couple who have moved to this small town and who are sort of being rejected by the inhabitants. So these two um, plotlines are woven together, and uh, it's it's a, it's a good one. I would, I would recommend it.
What's the name of that?
It's called Elevation. Um, it came out in twenty eighteen, uh, but uh, he reads it, and it's great, uh, great to listen to.
Charlotte?
Um, well, I I don't think I mentioned a book um, that I read for the award program that Nancy Lynn works with, um, which is, uh, I don't know if anybody can help me um, here. Um, it's the New England uh, Book Awards, I believe. And I read Careful What You Wish For by Hallie Efron, and Hallie Efron is the sister of Delia and Nora Efron. Um, and she writes a little bit lighter stuff. Um, she reads, she writes sort of mysteries, and I had a lot of fun with it. Um, I ended up staying up until one in the morning, reading it, which is unheard of for me to read, to number one, read fiction and to read until one o'clock in the morning. I usually podcast instead. So I I recommend it. I I think it's a really fun book, so that's Hallie Efron. Um, Be Careful What You Wish For, it's a, you know, a mystery kind of thing. Um, sort of along the lines of Sue Grafton sort of stuff. Um, and I'm reading a book right now called Last Flight, which happens to be fiction as well. And it's interesting, because a lot of the blog posts I read about read about people who read books, they're reading the opposite of what they're most comfortable with, which is funny. People who read nonfiction can't read nonfiction. They're reading fiction to escape. And people who normally read fiction can't read fiction. Um, they have to somehow or another read nonfiction. This book is called The Last Flight, and I'm I'm just starting it. So um, but it's about um, it's about two women who get on a who are scheduled to get on a plane, and and one uh, wants to disappear. And it just happens that the woman who got on the plane in her name, um, the plane crashed. So she has no problems disappearing, um, because everybody thinks that she's, her husband, her abusive husband thinks that she's died. So I don't know really what happens beyond this first grammar, but um, it's kind, it's fun, and it's capturing my interest. And if I'm reading fiction, everybody's happy, I think. Or we're in COVID, which is not so great.
Uh, moving over to trustees, Sarah.
I have not been doing much reading. I've been reading a little bit, but I have mostly been back to knitting and sewing. So those have been my main time sinks recently.
All right, George?
Yeah, I I have to join with Sarah there. I've been very busy with, uh, well, school's back in session, so there's a lot of oversight that's occurring. Um, I did catch myself starting to read my son's Latin textbook, so I think that's an indication that I need to get a book. And hopefully I'll I'll find some more time, but I have to say, it was pretty interesting. I I real, there was a lot about Greek mythology that I um, I obviously missed the first time around, so maybe I'll catch up this time.
Leah?
But no knitting?
No, no knitting.
Um, I um, I'm a volunteer with hospice. Um, because we're not able to really go out to house houses, and we can't volunteer. We can't do what we're supposed to do as volunteers. The um, the leaders of the volunteer program are pulling together a support group and to talk about this book. Can you read it?
Yes.
Heard about it?
Oh, wonderful book.
Yeah, I I thought it was wonderful, too, you know? Um, it's a physician who, um, from India, and um, he talks about death and dying and the way we do it in this country and um, alternatives to the way we, the alternatives to the way we handle death and die. And um, he was very open and honest, described his father's death and um, and really suggested alternative models of um, to nursing homes that is is worth talking, talking about and reading about. And he's, he's out of Brigham and Women's. He uses some facilities that are right here in Massachusetts as examples of models of alternative, um, alternatives to nursing care, nursing home care. So.
Does he get involved with examples from other countries and other cultures?
Yeah, a little bit.
Super.
Yeah, I recommend it.
Okay, thank you.
It's an easy read. It's a quick read, so.
Marguerite?
Um, I'm back to Louise Penny. I've found um, her latest book, All the Devils Are Here. And um, much like um, the beautiful mystery, she's out of Three Pines, although she, they all end up back in Three Pines. Um, they're out of it for most of the book. It's a, it's a good story. And I liked it. The characters were uh, not themselves in it, but um, their characters were, started out not being themselves, but they, their true selves rang through. They came out to be themselves. They were trying desperately to break away and relax, but it didn't come out. Anyways, it was a good story. If you get a chance, those of you that like Louise Penny, All the Devils Are Here. Twenty twenty.
Thanks, Marguerite. Dawn?
Um, I'm listening to two books. I'm listening to Ken Follett's newest one, which, of course, I can't remember the name of. And I'm listening to Girl Waits With Gun, and I can't remember the name of the author, but I'm enjoying both of them. They really engage me.
Let me ask you to do something I just did with Casey on my books from last time is give her those details offline, and she'll get them in. Um, I know we've got about a few minutes before we all race to the team even base. So I'm only gonna mention what I've been reading, which is not anything anybody else is gonna want to read. I'm doing a lot of research about organizations, stores, and other things throughout the history of Norwood. So I've been immersing myself in annual reports of the town, yearbooks from the town, and town directories, including Boston and Quincy, because several of the oldest operating stores in town had their origins somewhere else. And in every, in most cases, the owner, current owners don't know what those were, but they know just enough that I was able to track them down. It's kind of fun. And um, other things that I'm blanking on, but there is a tremendous amount of unprocessed historical material available about Norwood, and so I'm having a heck of a time soaking in it. So Patty Fanning is not the only person who knows everything about everything in Norwood, is that. Um, and with that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
One second.
Okay, Sarah, Donna, either one. Donna, you vote on a a German.
Sure, yes.
Marguerite?
Donna, Donna, that's fine with me.
Hey, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for making this virtual stuff work. Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.